... And right now, I don't know, they kind of have a district that they call the real pipe. But what we want to do is definitely put in a structure with a weird plate where there's a couple of three inches. So instead of having this, have a weird plate here with a hole in it, so that if it does spill open at three inches, can handle it, it spills over top of here.
So are, do you know if they're gonna be here? O'Donnell, is O'Donnell Electric gonna have somebody here?
Yeah, I think we just gotta work on this. I just wanted to make sure that, as I said, I saw it was a detention plan, but we need to specify size or anything like that. Yes, their whole, the whole is really tense. Is all things that you finish? Okay, alright. I don't have any drains from the pantry going into, going into, we don't have any, we're gonna have floor drains. Uh, I didn't see, I didn't, I just made sure. So floor drain, I will go with the same here. You know, if they have. Well, I just want to see the other planes, so I don't have any planes that I want to pack. Alright. I have to act, I have to act. Hi, guys, keep looking, say hello. Maybe they'd like to stop.
Thanks, Dan. That's what I'm wondering. So wait a few minutes, you see. No, I don't, I don't, because it's all, um, it just makes me mad, yeah, exactly. for okay tonight, so. Yes? Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Stanilejo, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Dignan. President, Mr. Iaquinto, here. Ms. Chick?
Here.
Mr. Roman?
Here.
Mr. Stanilejo, here. Mr. Kuzno?
Absent.
And Ms. Chocley?
Absent with notice.
Okay.
We have a quorum. We have, you have the agenda in front of you. Um, I would like to, oh, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda. I'd like to move item 10 up to item 7.5.
Move the agendas with the amendment?
Support. One, if I could add an amendment onto yours is, um, these, the public hearing items need to be action items if we're gonna take any action upon that, so I'd like to put those under new business, so we can take care of those.
Support.
Okay, so I have a motion by Mr. Dignan.
Uh, motion by?
Oh, so, I'm sorry, Mr. Iaquinto, and support by Mr. Dignan, okay, alright, thank you. And then you made another motion?
I just made an amendment.
Okay, we had a second support over here. Okay, alright. Okay, um.
Call the motion.
Yeah, I'm sorry, call to the public?
No, no.
I'm so sorry.
You're okay.
You're doing well.
Not a problem.
Vote, okay, we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. We're at call to the public. You have three minutes to speak. When you come up to the podium, please state your name and address, um, I'm sorry, address your comments to the chair. Uh, this is not a question and answer session, and, um, anybody would come, like to come up and speak?
I guess I, or someone?
Is it?
It's on? My name's Craig Warburton, out of 450 West Joy Road.
One second, Mr. Warburton, we wanna make sure it's on, so people in the audience can hear you.
The sound system's going like video. Is it on? How cool is that? Um, I'll start over. My name's Craig Warburton, I live at 450 West Joy Road. Um, I would like to express my thanks to the Planning Commission for arranging for the watershed council's presentation just two weeks ago. It was a very, very detailed and very professionally presented interpretation of specifically what our township is gonna change into if we just build out our master plan. I found those maps to be incredibly, um, significant. It's a shame that you three weren't here that night. It was, um, a really, really, really good presentation. And I know many of the township residents that attended have availed themselves of the survey services that were offered, um, to look at the green infrastructure of our township. I don't suspect I'll have any success at suggesting you abandon this survey and live with this master plan, which was adopted in 2012, um, after fending off development, after the great recession, um, in the throes of the recovery. This is an excellent document. Some of you participated on it, it's an incredible document. It's your charge to patrol this, present this, pretend, protect this, and, and defend it. There seems to be, um, an unbelievable penchant to try and develop this township. And I hope, as long as you're gonna spend whatever it is now for a letter, 48 cents, when you send out your survey, that you're gonna have in it the schedule of planning fairs, public hearings, and informational sessions that you will have scheduled in advance, so that you handle any changes to this document with the same care and kid gloves that produced it in 2012. I'm incredibly impressed with this document, just as it's written. I guess that's about, you know, there is a little bit more to add. I find it incredibly, um, disingenuous for a Planning Commission member to write an anonymous article for the local paper and try and present a citizens group as anything other than magnificent. Disagree with their opinion all you like, I had nothing to do with those people, but it was a group of citizens that got together with a single political mind and attempted to control the area they live in. And that, by, by God, is what this country's built on. That's democracy. And you guys haven't got the right to sit up there and say, "We're disingenuous," or "Their motives were less than genuine." So thank you very much.
What else? What about the state? Alright, um, we're going to go to the board. Alright, I have a Board of Trustees' report. Uh, the Board of Trustees met May 26. The Board listened to an update from Bill Lenahan, our ordinance officer, on the township's code enforcement efforts, and it's going very well. We're seeing a great deal of compliance. The Board also received an overview and had a subsequent discussion of the next budget. The township is in very good, solid position financially. Okay, do we have a ZBA report?
We do. The ZBA did meet on Monday. There were two cases before the zoning Board of Appeals. Both variances were granted. The first was a variance, um, on East Shore Drive to a resident who wanted to connect the existing garage to their home, uh, which created a setback, uh, issue with the garage. Uh, the garage was a freestanding unit and only required a five-foot setback. Once it was attached to the home, it required a 10-foot setback, so there's a variance of seven feet granted there. The other case was a, in the Ag District, and it was a residence that resides on a corner, so they have two front yards, and, uh, they were looking to expand on their 200-year-old home that is there, uh, and the ZBA found that their request was reasonable, uh, and that the setback for the second, second front yard area, um, the variance was acceptable, and, and we did allow that as well, so. The oddity, and I think it's just the uniqueness of the properties, the ZBA has heard, uh, multiple cases this year on, uh, houses that are on multiple streets, two and three street homes. Um, I think it's wonderful that they're doing stuff to their houses, and that's great. Um, it's just, just interesting that we've, you know, hadn't seen those for 15 years, and now we had three now come before us this year, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Dignan. Uh, do we have any staff reports? Nothing? Okay, thank you. And Planning Consultant Report, Mrs. Krebs?
Good evening, everyone. Um, we have not had any meetings with developers regarding new projects since the last Planning Commission meeting. Uh, we are in receipt of Mr. Nowatzky's detailed engineering plans. Um, OHM is currently reviewing them, as well as, um, we're waiting on some of the outstanding issues that the Planning Commission required as conditional approval, so we'll let you know, um, as we get more information on those outstanding items. Um, El Dante Pasta had a staff meeting, or we're going to be setting up a staff meeting, excuse me. Um, they possibly will be ready for the second meeting in June for their site plan review. And Steel Trucking applied for conditional and, and site, conditional use and site plan today, and that's at the former Carter Lumber on North Territorial, so that's more to come.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we are going to go to, um, the O'Donnell Electric agenda item, and would you like to speak to that as well, Mrs. Krebs?
Certainly. Um, in your packet, you have our review and the engineer's review on O'Donnell Electric Site Plan Review. Uh, the applicant is proposing to construct a 5,200 square foot storage building at their facility at 8505 Main Street. The building will be used for storage for the existing electrical contractor business. Uh, this is a permitted use in the Enterprise Service District, so that's why we're only reviewing the site plan. Uh, we reviewed this a couple of times, and a lot of our comments from our previous review, well, all of our comments from the previous review were, um, taken care of. Uh, they are providing appropriate parking, um, they are removing two trees, but they have provided additional replacement trees as required. Uh, the lighting is fine, there is no new signage, um, and they did provide the floor plans and elevations that we had requested previously. So our only comment was, um, the Township Engineer Review and Washtenaw County Road Commission approval of the curb drive approach. So we would recommend, um, the Planning Commission approve the site plan as presented.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions or comments for Mrs. Krebs? Okay. Uh, Mr. Russ, Jacob Rushlow is here from OHM, if you'd like to come up and speak to this as well, please.
Certainly, thank you. Good evening, everyone. In your Planning Commission package, you should have two letters from us. Uh, one is dated, I believe, May 13th, a second one, May 29th. We had, um, done three reviews of the site plan, starting back in late March, had a meeting with the applicant in April, they revised plans and resubmitted in early May. We still had a few comments based on that May 13th letter. Um, they quickly turned around a review, and, and you received a later letter dated May 29th, um, that we turned around pretty quick, so that we could, um, make sure that we had an updated letter in your, in your packet, so I would, most of the things I'm gonna focus on are gonna be on the May, May 29th letter, just, uh, if you'd like to follow along at all. Um, with the proposed building addition, the applicant is proposing, um, reconstruction of their existing parking lot drive approach, as well as a detention basin and a rain garden for stormwater management. Um, we had noted a few items in our review letter, I think, that, that can be addressed administratively going forward in the next step of detailed engineering review of, of the construction plans, and I'll just highlight on a few of those things here. Um, the parking lot should be curbed to try and convey, uh, stormwater into the detention pond rain garden area that it's intended to go. Um, adding some of this additional curb would, would help to facilitate that flow of water into the correct spot, as long as, as well as adding a spillway, um, into the, into the, um, uh, stormwater detention area for, for conveying that water. Um, so that's something that's kinda, kinda minor, it's more of an engineering detail, but it's something that, that, uh, we think should be addressed. Um, that kinda covers the first couple of comment, or first three comments in my letter. Um, as far as the existing utilities, uh, serving the site, they're currently served by private well and a public sanitary sewer. Um, they're currently assessed one REU for that sewer service, and we had, uh, met with the Utilities Department here, uh, with Tim Hardisty, and went over, um, the application, looked at the expansion. Their, their proposed addition is not including any new, um, facilities, it's basically just for storage. Um, so with that, there would not be any additional REU assignment that would be needed for the property, um, so we would recommend that you maintain the current REU assignment to one REU. Stormwater management, I kinda talked a little bit about with the paving and grading stuff, but, um, the, the base of their design basically has a detention pond, uh, slash rain garden that they're using for their, for their stormwater management that kinda wraps around the back side of the building. There's, uh, there's two points where that will discharge into, um, into Whitmore Lake right-of-way, um, and some, there's some existing storm facilities there that are owned by the road commission. They're, that's where they're proposing to make their connections. Um, that will require a permit from the road commission, so we'll review everything on-site during detailed engineering for conformance with the standards for how they're handling things on-site. When they're discharging it out into the road right-of-way and into that storm sewer system, um, that discharge point then becomes the jurisdiction of the road commission, so we'll work with them to make sure that, um, the design meets both standards, but, but a part of that will be required to be permitted through the road commission. I guess one thing to note that they're, that they're changing with that, you know, I mentioned that the, the water, the stormwater's being discharged out to the, um, Whitmore Lake Road right-of-way. Currently, most of the site actually drains towards the back of the property and then spills over into US 23 right-of-way, so this is a change on the existing drainage patterns. Um, not a big deal, I just wanted to point that out, so you're aware that, um, that it, that is a change in the drainage pattern. Um, those are basically the overview of our comments. There are some permits that will be required during the construction plan review from the road commission, which I had mentioned, a solar control permit, uh, building department, and fire department approval for code compliance. Um, overall, as submitted, we think the site plan now appears to be in substantial compliance with your requirements. Uh, we take no exception to the proposed site plan, and would recommend, uh, your consideration at this time for approval of the site plan, conditional upon our comments being addressed during the next step of detailed engineering review of the construction plans, and I'd be glad to answer any questions if there are any.
I know I discussed this with you before we started, but, um, I know you may not be able to answer this, but why are they changing the flow of discharge? Why aren't they just having it go out towards US 23, like it currently is? I mean, 'cause it seems like that's a lot of engineering to bring all of that and bring it all forward towards the road, rather than have it discharge out towards 23. Is there a reason why they wouldn't do that?
Yeah, I could, I did kinda have the same discussion with the applicant's engineer to, to ask that same question. Um, there's two, two parts to that. One was, uh, the grades that exist going out to the west towards 23, um, would be a little more challenging, actually, because it's at a higher elevation than going out towards Whitmore Lake Road. The way they're moving dirt around on the site and balancing the site out a little bit for this addition, it actually makes it easier for them to get water to flow the opposite direction. Um, and the other piece of that is basically they would just have to jump through more hoops with, hemmed out than they would with the road commission.
So are you comfortable with the system that they're indicating they want to put in place is going to handle the, without causing issues for Whitmore Lake Road?
In concept, I think it works well. Um, the, one thing that I should point out that the road commission I know is going to require is that the site discharge into their existing storm sewer is, um, at least, if not better than what currently goes into those, uh, pipes now. Basically meaning if they're discharging a certain rate of stormwater off the site now, uh, the road commission's gonna make them either meet that exactly or improve that condition, so there is no, um, there is no worry about surcharging the pipes out on Whitmore Lake that are there now and then flooding the right-of-way. So they will be required to make sure that they're maintaining enough or detaining enough stormwater on-site, so that they're not over, um, overtaxing basically the existing system, so.
Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Iaquinto?
His application was dated 2/16, so that's almost four months. Do you know what caused the delay in the whole process for him?
Uh, his site plan application is dated 2/16?
Uh, yes. His site plan review application was dated 2/16.
Yeah, so, what I can look back and see is when we reviewed this thing, our first review, uh, so we, we reviewed one in early March, sent a letter in early March, and then had a meeting, I believe, in April, uh, staff review meeting. You know, kinda, kinda the way the process, kinda the way the process goes that, that your planner has helped to, to put together, which I think is a pretty good process, is when applicant submits a site plan application, um, both the planner and the engineer review that, and if we don't think they're ready to come to the Planning Commission, we have a staff review meeting, go over the comments that we all have, they go back to the drawing board, make revisions, address our comments, and resubmit. Uh, we look at it again to see, okay, now is it ready to go to the Planning Commission? If not, we'll do another meeting. Um, the planner was satisfied in a second review, we still had a few more comments. Uh, we didn't think it needed a, a second meeting, but we did just basically do a conference call with the engineer over the phone. That's why there was two, uh, letters from May in your packet from us. Um, so it's, sometimes when the application is submitted, it may be a few months till it gets here, only because we're going through those steps and making sure that it's complete and can be, you know, brought before you for consideration for an approval, um, so that we're not going through a process of having to table them or deny them, and they go back and go through the process again and come to another commi, uh, Planning Commission meeting, so I think that kinda answers that question in the process.
Does anyone else have any comments or questions? Nope, alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to make a motion. In case JPC number 15002, O'Donnell Electric, make a motion to approve site plan as presented with the following, with the conditions laid out by, uh, Jacob Rushlow on the OHM report.
Dated?
Dated May 30.
29.
May 29th.
Support.
Okay, motion by Mr. Dignan, supported by Mr. Iaquinto. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to the portion of the meeting for the public hearings, and we have three items to, um, go over. Um, would you like to speak to those, Mrs. Krebs?
Sure, would you like me to do them individually?
Yes, please.
Okay. Um, the first public hearing is for a zoning ordinance text change, proposed text change to the Enterprise Service District to amend the permitted uses Section 36-563 to include single-family dwellings and accessory buildings and structures. Section 36-565F was also added to allow single-family homes within the ES District to adhere to the dimensional standards of Section 36-218, which is the SR1 Single Family Residential District Regulations and Standards. Um, for those of you that follow along, um, we talked about this a month or so ago, uh, these are the same provisions we talked about then, these two minor text amendments that coincide with the ES zoning change that occurred, uh, a while ago, and then, um, the following hearing will be for the map amendment, so.
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion, open the public hearing regarding item A zoning ordinance text change.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Iaquinto, and supported by Mr. Stanilejo. Anybody from the public like to speak to these items?
Make a motion to close the public hearing for item A zoning ordinance text change.
Support.
Motion by, uh, Mr. Iaquinto, supported by Mr. Stanilejo.
I would suggest we open the public hearing and then let her share.
On each one?
Yeah.
Okay.
We do have to call a vote, though.
Yes.
You have two, you have two motions sitting on the floor, okay.
We're efficient here.
You have two motions sitting on the floor.
You are right, you are right.
So we'll make, okay, uh, we are at the motion to?
Open.
Open the public hearing, and, okay, anyone, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Second motion?
To close the public hearing.
To close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
I make a motion, open the public hearing for item 8B, official zoning map amendment. Support.
Motion by Mr. Iaquinto, support. Anyone, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
This public hearing is for a modification to the official zoning map. Twelve parcels along Main Street and in the Horseshoe Lake area near Main Street are proposed to be reclassified from their current ES Enterprise Service and/or AR Agricultural zoning to SR1 Single Family Residential. The reclassification is in compliance with the Northfield Township Master Plan.
All right, thank you.
Make a motion to close the public hearing for, uh, public, item 8B.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Dignan, supported by Mr. Stanilejo, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Make a motion, open the public hearing for item 8C, site plan review manual.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Iaquinto, support by Mr. Dignan, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Okay. This public hearing is for modification to the site plan review ma, manual, Section 36-866B. Final site plan procedure outlines the process for filing a site plan application with the township referencing the Township Site Plan Manual. Proposed amendments to the Township's, uh, Site Plan Manual include updating new Munich Code reference numbers, adding language indicating the Planning Commission reviews and, reviews the application materials and full plan set, and updating township contact information.
Would anyone like to speak to this item? From the public? Anyone? No?
Make a motion to close the public hearing for 8C, site plan review manual.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Iaquinto, support by Mr. Dignan, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone? Anyone opposed? Motion passes. So we are going to send these on to the Board of Trustees?
We have to make a motion. Yeah, it's under new business.
All right. So we can make them all in one motion?
Yeah, well, we move on to old business first, nine.
All right. Okay, so we're going to move on to old business number nine, the citizen survey master plan.
The, I haven't heard much from the last time we met. Doug told me today that the township attorney was reviewing the contract, and so they were just finalizing the details.
Okay.
So hopefully more at your next meeting. Hopefully we'll be ready to move forward.
Right, so nothing new right now?
Nothing new.
Okay, thank you.
Any idea as to when these, the contracts will be signed so that they will start their process?
I do not know, but I can keep you up to date. When we get any information, we'll be sure to forward it on to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any comments? Questions? No? Thank you. Okay. Okay.
So it'll be new business regarding the?
New business regarding the, go ahead, Mr. Dignan.
I'd like to make a motion that Planning Commission forward to the Board of Trustees the following amendments with the recommendation of approval. The zoning ordinance text change that was addressed today at the public hearing, the official zoning map amendment, and the site plan review manual, Section 36-866B.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Dignan, support by Mr. Iaquinto. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right, on to?
It'd be minutes.
The minutes, right.
May 20th.
All right, we are going on to the minutes of the May 20th Northfield Township Planning Commission meeting. Anybody have any changes with the minutes? I read through all of it. I haven't seen anything. It was the way it was done. I have a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of May 20th as presented.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Dignan, support by Mr. Stanalacho. Thank you.
Call the vote, or call the vote.
Yep, go on to the second call to the public.
Call the vote.
I apologize. This is so new to me. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, we're on to the?
Actually, for policy review and discussion.
I have nothing. Do anyone have? No? Nothing? Policy review and discussion, okay. All right, on to the second call of the public. Do we have anyone that wishes to speak tonight? All right. Okay, well, thank you for coming. And then comments from the commissioners? Any comments?
I have one thing.
Thank you.
I'd just like to extend a thank you to Mary Burden, who's taking on all the responsibilities of getting our packets together for the zoning board and the Planning Commission, and even though we've had some hiccups coming along, she's been right on top of everything and in contact with, you know, I've experienced that myself, and it's really appreciated, and we look forward to working with you long-term and getting things going. But thank you.
I agree. Thank you very much. You're doing a great job. Anybody else? Mr. Iaquinto?
Yes. I would like to mention that the Whitmore Lake High School baseball, high school varsity boys baseball team won districts first time since 2003.
Well, congratulations. Yeah, nice.
And they move on to regional finals this Saturday at Clinton High School at 10 o'clock. So anyone in TV land or anyone here that would like to support, come and support your Whitmore Lake High School baseball team on to victory, please do so at Clinton High School at 10 o'clock AM on Saturday. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Great day to be a Trojan.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Stanalacho?
I'd like to publicly welcome our township manager, Howard Fink, and his wife, Eliza's. They have a new addition to their family, a baby boy which was born over the weekend. I'd like to publicly welcome them into our community. And I'd like to make sure that we keep our men and women in uniform, and our thoughts and prayers are the ones that are allowing us to have a free expression of our thoughts and ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kuzno? Okay, Mr. Roman?
Not tonight, thanks.
All right, thank you. I want to thank my fellow commissioners for helping me tonight. This is so strange for me to be sitting here doing this. This is not my chair, so thank you. I appreciate it. All right, so?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, wait, hang on. One more. Okay, we have an announcement. Our next regular meeting will be June 17th, 2015. I hope to see you all here. And?
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Stanalacho, approved by Mr. Dignan. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, good night, everybody. Thank you.